I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call?
Chizel is absent. Bell Richard?
Here.
Carlson?
Here.
Luce?
Here.
Lor?
Here.
Restad is absent. Johnson?
Here.
Do we have a motion for approval of the agenda?
Move.
The move was made by Bell Richard and seconded by Lor. Roll call.
Bell Richard?
Aye.
Carlson?
Aye.
Luce?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Okay, agenda has been approved. I want to welcome all of the firemen, all the volunteers and the other firemen. This is the largest group of firemen I've seen in one place at one time. We do have public comment period here and I think maybe somebody wants to speak for the firemen. Does somebody want to speak?
Thanks very much. Thank you Mayor, council members. My name is Eric Sovereign. I live at 205 Hollihan Street in Decorah. I am a member of the Decorah Fire Department and also the president of the Decorah Fire Volunteers Association. I come here today to express concern over a proposed city policy and to hopefully supply you with some information regarding its possible effects. I will be brief, about three minutes if that's all right. Last week a memo from the city manager's office came to us stating that overtime pay for our three full-time engineers is expressly forbidden, no matter the circumstances. We understand that the council and the city manager's office have a solemn oath to run the city's budget in the most efficient manner possible and we appreciate that this is a difficult and vital task. This memo says however, that in situations where overtime pay would be required for the engineers, the city would lock the fire department doors and the station would go unstaffed rather than pay that overtime. Currently we have three paid full-time engineers. They work individual 24-hour shifts, maintain equipment, drive and operate Engine One, and page the volunteer firefighters to the station when needed, also performing many other vital tasks. We also have a system of relief drivers who can substitute for the full-time engineers when they need to be absent for earned vacation and sick time. Through a system of complex Fair Labor Standard Act regulations regarding number of hours worked by individuals and number of employees in the pool, it becomes difficult, sometimes impossible, to avoid lapsing into an overtime pay situation. For the sake of brevity, I will spare you the details of the math on this, but please let me know if you'd like elaboration on that. The memo from the city manager's office goes on to state that the Decorah Law Enforcement Dispatch Center has the technology to dispatch the fire department, which is true, and that this will be an acceptable stopgap measure when the fire station sits empty. What this does not take into account is what actually occurs when we are summoned to an emergency. The engineer on duty gets a vital jump on our response by being physically at the station when the call comes in. The location of the emergency is plotted, directions are ready for the appropriate responding trucks, the trucks are started, the doors of the station are opened, potential water sources are located, and the sequence in which the vehicles will respond and what order is established. Information is also compiled about the incident itself. As a responding firefighter, my response is made quick and easy. I move directly to my locker, don the appropriate turnout gear, and get in the truck that's ready to roll. In our business, response time is everything. As a volunteer department, we are naturally delayed by our ability to get to the station. Despite this fact, we've had response time as low as four minutes from the page for fires and other emergencies within the city. Should the page come when the station is unstaffed, we will still do our jobs as we always do, but our response time will be delayed further. Unlocking the doors, finding the address, plotting a route, opening the garage doors, and starting the trucks, these things seem like they wouldn't take much time and they don't, any one of them. As an aggregate however, we will be adding precious minutes to our response. To quickly describe the efforts of this delay, allow me to say this about fire behavior in particular. A fire in a structure will double in size every 30 seconds. Double in size every 30 seconds. We have in our city an excellent record of stopping big fires, saving property and helping avoid injury. We do this because we have a city and rural fire board that provide us with excellent equipment and a budget that allows us to train harder and more often than most departments of our size and scope. The support we receive from the city council and from the population is unparalleled. However, a policy that leaves the station unstaffed at any time will increase our response times. It will decrease our effectiveness as a department. Let's not squander the investment that we have as a city in the equipment that sits in that station and let's not increase the danger of property loss and life safety for the population and for members of the department over what amounts to a drop in the budgetary bucket. I thank you very much for your time. If you have questions, I'll take them, but other than that, I'll be done.
You have some questions for Eric? I know that there's at least a plan to have a meeting, a personnel meeting after the next city council meeting.
Right, June 20th.
20th.
Just wanted to, my goal here was to make sure that all the council members were informed of this and sort of how we feel about it and...
Do you have any other...
Is it possible through scheduling though, to avoid overtime using this current system that we have? Is it possible to do that when drivers are trading and changing all the time? That is probably part of the problem.
Well, the rules state that during a 28-day period, a driver is allowed to work about 212 hours. The rule is specific to fire departments. Our drivers tend to work more than that, but they don't charge overtime because there is also a number of employees rule. So four employees, anything more than four, and now overtime rules apply. Less than four, and the drivers can work as many hours as they want and it will be regular hours. The downside is that drivers accrue vacation time, they have sick time, they have bereavement time. One of the things that happened this year was one of the drivers was injured and out for seven weeks and at that point, now we're really leaning on the other two drivers to take over a lot of extra shifts, which doesn't get paid time and a half until they simply can't work those shifts, in which case we have relief drivers. Now, if two relief drivers work in a two-week pay period, now those overtime rules go into effect and overtime must be paid for the regular drivers that go over that, whatever the hours are. And so, it's possible, it's extremely difficult. The relief drivers are all full-time employees elsewhere and so on a Tuesday it becomes really difficult to find, you know, somebody that does it. And again, the vacation time that's earned by these guys is, you know, time that they get to take and so scheduling it is something that certainly we will absolutely try and work with. We're not, you know, holding anybody's feet to the fire. But it's, it literally is something that we'll work with, but the idea that, I mean, the memo says we're just, we're going to shut the doors if you can't work it out and in fact, you know, also threatens termination of employment. So, those are things that are pretty serious and we just wanted to say, the option of leaving the station unstaffed to us is an unnecessary step, especially when, you know, in the calendar year so far, it's on the nature of $925 that we're talking about overtime pay that's happened since the first of the year with somebody being out seven weeks. So...
Was the overtime accrued during the time that we had someone out?
There were multiple instances, and I don't have the information in front of me, but there were at least two or three separate instances of overtime.
Were they related to the absence of an employee who was out injured?
I don't believe all of them were.
Okay. So again, it's something, I mean, we're happy to work with, it's just the threat of closing the station I think is something that we would really like to avoid for the good of everyone. We're more than happy to come up with any number of solutions for working out an overtime problem. It's something that we'd like to work with.
Do you know how many cities our size in Iowa or Minnesota have a situation like ours where we have full-time, you know, drivers who are on staff 24/7 with other volunteers?
There are quite a few, actually. Charles City comes to mind, but they, Charles City, if I'm not being correct, and somebody can correct me, that the chief there is a full-time position and so they have four people. And then having four people that are full-time employees, that situation is essentially taken care of because now the trading of shifts can go between people that are almost always available. The thing is with three people working 24-hour shifts in a 28-day period, there are, two of them will work nine 24-hour shifts and one of them will work 10. That 10, the person who works 10 shifts in that 28-day period will work 240 hours, which is over the 212 because there are not four or five employees, excuse me. That time is not paid time and a half. So we're already working over the time that's talked about in there. And we get away with not paying time and a half because of the federal rules involved that. If you had the fourth employee and they're full-time, now, you know, that makes that math so much easier to work with. So that's what other cities have done. I'm sure other cities are in a similar situation with us with three and trying to figure out the rules and trying to figure out how to make it better.
Excuse my ignorance here because I've just been added to the safety committee this In the past, have the fire department in the city sat down and worked through any of these problems or has this just come up all of a sudden?
There certainly have been meetings about this. I think our reaction to this has been due to a memo that just says, alright, here's, you know, no more overtime. There is no overtime and if there is, the station closes. To us, that's...
But is there any rules, regulations, or insurance policy that would be affected here?
The insurance would, that would have to be up to the city to work that out. I don't know the intricacies on that one. Again, I'm the head of the volunteer organization. So there are parts of this, I'm speaking as the voice of the volunteers at this point to say, closing the station will increase our response time and would be a bad thing for the city. So let's work on something else. What that is, again, we have a meeting scheduled to work on. And the other thing, we talked about with a couple of the members, there are some new people on the council. We'd like to invite you over sometime. We have trainings nearly every Wednesday. It'd be great to have everyone show up on a Wednesday and we can have kind of a Q and A session. How does everything work? How does all this happen? You know, what happens in different emergency situations? What's the equipment used for? How is it used? Obviously there's a separation between what the city owns and what the rural board owns and actually what the association owns as well. So we have sort of three entities working on who has what, but I think that would be a helpful thing for us to get to know you and for you to have a good handle on what happens there. I think, you know, it's easy to, it's easy to look and come in the fire department in the morning and see, you know, some retired guy sitting around having coffee and the driver sitting there with him and then what happens the rest of the time? What happens when there's an emergency? What happens during the day when trucks are being checked and vital things are being checked off of lists? Is there enough air in all the air packs? Are the trucks in good shape? So I think there's a lot of that that just gets missed because it just happens because we have a dedicated crew of drivers and we have a super dedicated crew of people that come here for what amounts to a volunteer position even though we're paid on call, but my check per year is, not why I come.
I know you want to keep it to the overtime pay, but as I understand, there's a lot more problems, including safety, things with 911 calls not coming to the fire department, that type of stuff. So if you get into discussion with the city council, I'd like to broaden that a little bit once we solve, try to solve some overtime issues.
Absolutely.
Okay?
Yeah, and I'd also like to take the opportunity to say on that, you know, it's a pleasure to work with the police and sheriffs and the ambulance and the dispatch center and I think we all work together very well. There's always going to be hiccups and there's always going to be things that need fixing and we just want to stand here saying that we're ready to do what it takes as long as it doesn't take a shot in the fire department.
Well, I guess we all appreciate what the volunteers do and, I mean, it's very vital. I mean, you sometimes put your life on the line, which is critical and we certainly appreciate the kinds of things you do. Well, I don't know if there's any other questions, but we'll be meeting again to communicate, try to understand and solve the issues.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I encourage the firemen to stay here for the whole meeting.
You can encourage all you like.
Thank you very much.
Okay, move to the consent agenda, which includes the minutes of the May 4th and May 16th and May 20th meetings. Item B is the claims. Item C is outdoor service area for T-Box Bar and Grill. That's the service area out front, three feet. Item D is renewed class beer permit for Toppling Goliath, including outdoor service area and Sunday sales. Item E is United Way request to close the parking lot for the library August 18th from 7:00 a.m. through 7:00 p.m. for the annual fun family night. Item F is request from Norby Boer from the Oakland Auto Club to close Main Street from Court to River for car club parking until June 23rd. And item G is request by Logan's Hope MDA fundraiser to close Ice Cave Road on June 11th from 8:00 to 11:00 a.m. for walk-run. Item H is a special events permit for refuel Summer Sultus Yoga Class, 105 Hill Road Avenue on June 20th, 6:00 a.m. through 8:00 p.m. Item I is partial pay number one, Old Stage Road Interceptor Silver Improvement Project of $78,259.10. Item J is partial pay number one, Airport Demo and Grading Improvement Project, $108,985.47. Item K is resolution number 2735, a resolution amending 28E agreement between City of Decorah and Decorah Rural Fire Protective Association. Basically, there's no changes in that agreement. Item L is resolution number 2737, a resolution providing for notice of hearing of a proposed amendment to the revitalization for plan for the College Drive Urban Renewal District. Any questions about the consent agenda?
I wanted to ask a couple of questions about item C since the questions are here. As I understand, it's an amendment to the liquor license so that that three-foot area could be included where you put the overhead in so you could take drinks to that space. Is it thought then that they would walk through the new door or the overhead?
No. No. I do have some additional information and if I may, I have some drawings on this item if it would be okay.
Real bike.
So Mike Bachman from T-Box. Obviously, I think you all know me and my wife Dominique is here with me. I did do just a real quick drawing. Do you mind if I come up and...
Sure, go ahead.
And there's, on the backside is another drawing and I can explain it to you. So, I don't know if you have seen information via social media since we did this and on Friday, it's been overwhelming, the response that I've received on a positive note. Unbelievable. I was very frightened and afraid to do, make the step, you know, but sometimes you don't risk is, what you have to take in order to find out what kind of reward you can get from the backside of it. With that overwhelming response, what Dominique and I are thinking about doing is asking for a little bit more space than three feet. If three feet seriously is not much longer than this table, you know, in the width. It's not, it's not much at all. This drawing that I've showed you here is five. The sidewalk downtown is 10 feet wide.
So just a second, now wouldn't this have go through the Board of Adjustment?
Well, this is, yeah, I mean, this isn't the action item. The action item is to simply approve the liquor license for outdoor service. So if you're asking for additional sidewalk, that's not under this agenda item.
Okay, and that's fine if I have to get, you know...
But if you're kind of explaining what you're doing, I think the question from Councilman Luce was, how will patrons access this area if your outdoor license is...
They would come in from, they'd go through the main door and then come in and be able to then access that space from the door that we provided.
So you're not going to ask them to take the step and...
No. Well, they would step down, they would step down to that area, but three feet, you know, is not very much space at all, so...
Well, that's what I was trying to ask. If patrons once inside T-Box would set it, get to those tables by stepping the step down to...
Correct.
And there would be, well, what you've got there, that would be outside the tables as a barrier?
Correct. So, and on the backside is, you know, just a drawing of the fencing that we had put in. It's just a one-inch square tubing fencing with a little flower pot in the middle, so it'd really enhance the sidewalk and the beauty of the downtown space. So, yeah, you would come through the main door and then access that space through the restaurant. And my servers would do the same way. So it would be coordinated off by the fencing that we'd have, so you wouldn't be able to access that space from outside. If you did, you know, I'm sure people may try to do that, but it'd just be a matter of training, timing, you know, for the customers to understand how the procedure works. With anything new, it always takes a little bit of time. So that would be the deal there.
Well, I know several years ago, there was a consultant that I think Tourism brought in. I don't recall the gentleman's name.
Roger Brooks.
Yeah, and he had recommended that the city look into allowing some businesses like this one to actually take over the parking space in front of their building for this kind of purpose as well. Essentially building, you know, kind of a platform so that there's no gap between the curb and the street and using those areas for public service for limited parts of the year, maybe three months, you know, summer when things are busy. And I thought that was a good idea then, although I've been kind of waiting for someone to kind of decide to want to do that and then wondering, are you thinking of that at all, of the possibility?
Well, like, you know, with this drawing, the five feet would be great. That'd be a start. There's other options. There's that option where, you know, you still have the sidewalk, but you have the seating on the other side of the sidewalk where people, I've seen drawings or pictures where the sidewalk was in, it would go right through the middle of your seating area. So you'd have patrons that would sit on both sides and your downtown patrons or sidewalk traffic would just walk right through. There's some sidewalks where there's a foot that you have to walk around the seating area. There's many, I mean, if you were to go online and look, there's so many different options and, I mean, I don't know if any of you have been to any other cities where, you know, you have these outdoor service areas. I don't think there's ever a thought where you walk or drive by these areas and you think negatively towards these areas. You always think that's really neat. That's a nice space. They've really done a nice job and you coordinate yourself to get around that, whether you have to wait for a stroller and a child to come by and then you go by based on the space. But in this circumstance, you still have five feet. Someone did bring up the watering golf cart and it was downtown and I did measure it and it's under four feet. So that would still be able to get by our service area. So that would be the only thing. There is no light poles out front and there are no trees out front of our place, so it's a nice wide open space. And I know I'm not asking for that right now, but just to give you information.
So you still, we'll still have the three feet on the agenda tonight or should we take that off?
Well, amending the liquor license is what's on... I believe that he has access to that three feet. Yeah. Because I think that's defined in the ordinance.
Right, so if you get the okay through the Board of Adjustment, then we have another okay.
But I think we should have a bigger conversation about some of these other items that were brought up, whether that's at P&amp;Z or Street Committee or something like that. We can talk about where the best forum for that is. Maybe P&amp;Z.
The right now sidewalk only talks about up to 10 foot. Well, we have some sidewalks downtown that are 17 foot. So to look at the whole issue, I think needs to be, and the idea of even what Kirk suggested.
There have been people in town asking me about if there'd be restriction on parking there and so that's got to be addressed and the big issue is parking is down there. I'm not sure I'm ready to dine out on the street.
But there's already dining in front of buildings.
No, no, I'm not talking about that. I'm, the parking space, okay. But people have been asking whether there's going to be a prohibitive, you know, parking in that area. So that does have to be addressed for people. And the other question I was going to, did you ever get the air curtain figured out?
I'm still getting information on that right now. I got three or four different prototypes that I've got, I'm looking at. I have a gentleman that's going to talk to me here in the next couple of days. Obviously, Halgen has a one on their service entrance that I'm going to go look at through Jeff.
Maybe fill these people on the...
Well, a lot of people are worried about the bugs and the heat that comes in. There is a product called an air curtain. If you look at it through thermal imaging, the heat stays out, the cool stays in. The bugs stay out, they don't come in. Emissions stay out, they don't come in. It's just a air, a flow of air that flows straight down. They're pretty phenomenal. One individual said his staff said he was crazy when he put that in and now a year later, they think he's a genius because of the fact there's no bugs, there's no flies coming in. It's a nice environment to be around. And that's something we put in too. So it'd be a comfortable space where that would be always an open air environment, which people really seem to really are going towards. If you go towards, look at Pulpit Rock and the Toppling Goliath, people tend to want to sit outside. You know, temperature's not really always an issue. It's just the fact that they want to be outside into the environment that they, we all like to be in, which is outside, especially when we're in the winter for five months of the year. So when it comes around, this is when we want to be out there.
Those are 30-inch tables at the Co-op and I just took a tape measure today and just checked and one of the chairs wasn't across and it was still within three feet. So I know it's limited to what you'd like to do, but I think for purposes of what we're doing on this agenda, that's all we can do at this point.
Agenda tonight is the three feet.
Yes, well, it's the liquor.
And with that being said, I would go to the proper measures and go to the proper meetings that I need to go to to ask for that permission. That would be a problem. Another thing for you guys to put in your heads also is for the amount of money that we've spent in this community for a bike path, over $10 million. You know, my theory is why do we hide the bike racks? That would be something I'd like to put in front of my place too. I have asked numerous business owners around my area and every one of them are in favor of it. It just, right now, tonight, I have pictures, but there are six bikes leaning against my building, which is now a small space because I don't have that space that they used to lean in against. And I looked over across the street and there was one bike over there. So, you know, six bikes is six cars. One bike is one car, so, you know, if somebody has an issue with the parking, you know, one bike is one car. And there's nights where I can count up to 15 to 20 bikes leaning against my building. Some of these people have two to three to $4,000 bikes. I know they can lock it over there, but a lot of these people don't like to carry locks. I would provide locks with them, in the restaurant where they could lock up their two, three, two or three or $4,000 bike right out front where they can see it. It's just one of those things, you know, you have a nice car, you want to put it where you can see it. You get valet parked, put it up front where I can see it. It's just one of those things. So it'd be another thing, and I know it's just putting an idea in your head, and once again, I'd go through the proper measures to ask for that permission, but for you guys to start thinking about that.
Do you have enough room, Mike?
For what?
For the bike rack.
It'd be a parking space.
Just like it is now. Just a different location.
Yes. And it's a matter of, you know, people riding the trail and then coming downtown and saying, wow, we can actually ride our bike downtown and it's a, you know, a bike-friendly town where we can park our bikes downtown. I know there's bike racks here. We all know that, they are. But I bet if you took a poll and asked where they are, I bet a lot of people would not know where they are. a lot of people would not know where they actually are. If you had to write down where everybody could see it, they would say, it's right there in front of T-Box. You know, so that's just, that's my thoughts, my theory on bike parking. Because I think, you know, I don't know, Kurt, I don't know if you still ride the trails, but there's, five, six years ago, you could go on the trail and maybe run into one person. You run, go on the trails now, you'd be hard pressed not to run into two or three people just, you know, each day, almost every day. People are coming here to ride, and that's just, that's trails in our hills. It's not even including the trail that we have that we put so much beautiful money into to make it such a great place. So, my thoughts on that. If you have anything else, any other questions, but I appreciate your consideration and your thoughts on this.
I'm sure several of those will be discussed in the future again.
Okay.
I think it's a progressive idea, and I want to thank you for bringing it to us to at least start discussion, discussing it.
Okay.
Any other questions about the consent agenda?
Will we adopt consent agenda? Second.
Motion by Luce, second by Johnson. Go call.
Luce? Aye. Johnson?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Bell Richard?
Aye.
Carlson?
Aye.
Okay, consent agenda has been approved. Actually, I did miss a step here on public comment. We did have some public comment, but was there anybody else that wanted to talk to the council about an issue that's not on the agenda? Okay, so we didn't miss anybody. Good. Then we'll move on to item six, discussion of possible action regarding construction contract with Wicks Construction for the, construction of the 1216 taxi lane and hangar improvement project at the airport. And Chad, I guess you've got some explanation on that?
Yeah. Mayor, I'll do my best here to try to set this up. It's kind of a convoluted issue, but basically, we've proposed a project for a seven-stall hangar improvement project at the Decorah Airport. We've been given the green light every step of the way by the FAA, including concurrence with the bid awards. Council had seen this action over the last several weeks or months. But where we are stuck is that the FAA has not awarded the grant for the project, and that's becoming a problem because we're in the midst of the construction season to be able to order the building, schedule the contractors, get the work lined up, which they've been anticipating because they bid on the project and were awarded the project, again, with FAA concurrence and approvals along the way. We are asking, I'm asking our consulting engineer, Mike Bearden is here as well, for the council to authorize execution of the contract, the, the construction agreement, so that the contractor can begin scheduling. And essentially, what this means is that the FAA has authorized funding through July 15. They haven't authorized funding through the rest of the, the rest of their fiscal year, which goes through September 30. We're asking the council to consider authorizing the agreements, the construction documents, and basically carrying that load until the FAA or Congress authorizes the aviation bill, and the FAA can then award the grant for the project. Does that make sense?
Yes. What's the risk of Congress not?
Or the likelihood of them not?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, you know, I think it's, it's pretty minimal that they would not fund this. And I think what's going to happen in any political arena or election year, there's a lot of maneuvering back and forth at the congressional level in terms of the give and take. When it comes down to it, we fully expect, like every time this happens, that they would, would fund it at least temporarily or extend it, if not fully fund the five-year AIP program.
Has there been conversations with the department? Has there been any pressure asked for through our legislative people?
Yes. There, there have been a couple of instances where we've had communication with both our state and federal delegations. Of course, our state doesn't have much leverage, but I did have a conversation last Friday with Senator Mike Breitbach about the issue. He in turn had conversation with our Congressman Rod Blum. I've carried information back to both Senator Ernst's office and Congressman Blum's office. I believe Mike's had conversation with our Senate delegations as well. And again, I think it's, it's this political maneuvering. You know, will something happen? Yes. When? That's the question as far as funding the aviation bill.
Worst-case scenario, Chad, what would happen if we didn't get the funding and we did go through the contract? Would we just use our own funds then?
Right. Worst-case scenario, all the wheels came off the bus, they didn't fund anything, the, the city would be on the hook for the full cost of the project. Keep it in context, though, you know, we're looking at a $478,000 project. The FAA is looking at, you know, multimillion-dollar grants out there for other airports. Will this not get funded? We're a very small pebble in the grand scheme of the aviation planning, right? So I think the risk is pretty minimal that they would not fund the aviation bill.
I would move we sign the contract with Wicks and begin the process.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Luce and second by Carlson. Other questions? Go call.
Luce? Aye. Carlson?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Bell Richard?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carried. Consider Resolution 2736 ordering construction, setting bid dates, setting hearing dates, and authorizing publishing notice for the Dunning Springs Stone Arch Bridge project for July 5. So need some explanation on that, and Andy's going to give us some background too or not here.
I don't know if Andy was prepared to, but just, yeah, this sets, this sets the public hearing, of course. This becomes, becomes a public improvement project because it's anticipated that the, the bidding and contract amounts will be over the state-required bid thresholds, and so we're required to go through these processes. As you know, you approved an engineering services agreement with WHKS to design the footings and foundational work for this bridge, which is a unique project. It's, it's a hand-built dry mortar stone bridge. But again, because the overall anticipated cost is over that bid threshold amount, there are certain things that we'll have to do. One of those is setting a public hearing on the project. I put some of the other timelines in your, in your background there as to the milestones for the projects. I believe there's a rendition of what the project will look like in your packet as well.
Right.
What do we have?
I'd move Resolution 2736.
Motion by Luce.
And just a correction, it's actually 2737. 37? Yep, that's a typo there. Or, excuse me.
No, that's, we changed.
No, it is. I'm sorry.
It's still 2736.
2736.
It's the...
Yep. Sorry, I have the corrected copy in front of me.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Luce, second by Bell Richard. Any other questions? Go call.
Luce?
Aye.
Bell Richard?
Aye.
Carlson?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Okay, carried. I have a question. Is that going to be exactly in the same place as the wooden bridge here now?
Upstream, just slightly.
Slightly. So then you change the approach to go up. Okay. Okay, we're down to item eight, which is consider ordinance 1183 amending chapter 13.20 regarding the water rates. This is second reading.
So move.
Okay. Motion by Luce.
Second.
And second by Bell Richard. Seems to be kind of continuous here.
And just a point of clarification or discussion, I guess, that I failed to mention last time. In the ordinance, the way the ordinance is written, there is an exemption or, or an area of the water rates that are not included in the calculations for the increase, and that's that minimum 500 cubic feet or below level. So I just want to make sure the council understands that. See if you have any questions about that. That's what you'd be voting on.
Any other concerns? Go call.
Luce?
Aye.
Bell Richard?
Aye.
Carlson?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Bell Richard?
Aye.
Carlson?
Aye.
Luce?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Luce?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carried. Consider ordinance number 1185 amending chapter 18.816 regarding collection and transportation of garbage and other refuse to the designated sanitary landfill for the city of Decorah. This will be the first reading, and I think we did discuss that last time, but maybe just a little clarification, Chad.
This is a recommendation from your landfill representative, Dave Policy was here last time talking about their recommendation that the council consider this. Currently, the city codes do not require designate a landfill depository for all solid waste hauled in the city. This does that and names the Winship County landfill and the landfill association as the recipient for that solid waste.
Okay. Have support.
I move to accept ordinance 1185.
Okay. Motion by Bell Richard.
Second.
Second by Carlson. Any other comments? Go call.
Bell Richard?
Aye.
Carlson?
Aye.
Luce?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carried. We've had some appointments for commissions, planning and zoning. We have an application from Nathan Thompson, and do we have motion for that approval?
Make a motion for approval with Nathan Thompson.
I'll second it.
Carlson made the motion, second by Johnson. Any questions?
Mayor, I might suggest to, you could do all these at one time if you...
Yeah, I was going to do, just, I was going to do the library.
Okay.
Perfect. We could, yes.
So motion by Carlson, second by Johnson?
Right. Go call.
Carlson?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Bell Richard?
Aye.
Luce?
Aye.
Okay. And we do have recommendations from the library board of trustees to reappoint Andrea Beckendorf and Ed Brooks. Ed is the real appointee, and Robert Feldy is the new appointee. So motion for new members on the library board.
Move for approval.
Motion by Johnson.
Second.
Second by Luce. Questions? Go call.
Johnson?
Aye.
Luce?
Aye.
Carlson?
Aye.
Bell Richard?
Aye.
Lor?
Aye.
Okay.